Shut off your cell phones, please. Turn on your microphones.
Where are you going?
So I have one o'clock. You can open the work session for the Marquette Township Board. This is Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, 1:00 P.M. Work session is a little more relaxed setting for discussion. And I'm fine with that. A little more easygoing. My main reason for wanting to have this, and I know everybody was kind of pushing it back, saying we don't need to worry about this till December, is, you know, we opted out already and said, "We're gonna wait and see what the state does so we know what direction to take. We don't want to put a bunch of stuff in place and then have it change." In the meantime, I've listened to the MTA presentation that Isaac brought back, and thanks to Isaac and Randy, that's been downloaded to your computers and sent to you. So you can listen to that. You need to listen to that before we make any concrete decisions, because it covers medical, recreational, fire issues, ordinance, planning, zoning. It covers everything. Because opting in is gonna make a big difference in how we operate completely with rules and regulations. But anyway, with that being said, my hope, while this can be a loose conversation, is that we focus on the philosophical side of this first. Whatever we decide on how we want to have our township structured, represented, the type of place we want to have it be to live, work, and play, that's what we need to decide. From there, we can figure out what do we want to allow, what we don't want to allow, what we do with signage and zoning, and everything else falls into place after that. And I'm not saying we can't talk about that stuff now, but until we have more information, this is very in-depth, extremely in-depth. There's lots of moving parts to this. So we can kind of pick and choose, but I think we first need to decide how we see the township going forward. That's kind of my hope. And then, like I say, we can figure out where we go from there, what we allow and don't allow. So our gentleman brought packets for us for more reading information. I don't have a specific agenda as far as what to talk about. I'm kind of looking for opinions, ideas. What do we see, how do we see Marquette Township as a part of what's happening in the state? I can give you some of the facts and figures from the tape that I listened to, and I'm gonna listen to it again, because it's got lots of information. Randy?
My opinion is, I think it's coming. I don't know, wherever in the state you're at, it's coming. And we might as well move up the times with it and accept it and move on, because it's gonna happen. It's just a matter of when. That's my opinion.
Max John was...
He was Max John? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Maybe would be in order, in following your train of thought, if we just talked about a couple of facts that we can talk about. The law was passed by the people. That's a fact. It's a reality. It's gonna happen. The travel group that has come to us has a facility in place. It isn't something that's gonna be questioned about what they might plan. They have a facility in place. We've had an extremely good relationship over the past with the people who have proposed that we give it some thought. That past relationship is something that we can all point to. We know from past experience that they plan to control carefully should we decide to go with what they're suggesting. I agree with what's been said earlier, that, well, I hope I'm still recognized as someone who really is opposed to smoking in every way we can possibly stop it, for a lot of But know that what has been proposed, at least today, is not smoking at all. It's talking about the sale of aids to people who can use some help. I agree that we should talk about it as you've proposed it to our supervisor, but I don't think it will have to go on for a long time. It seems to me like it's gonna move along quickly, and while we stand back and watch it growing in other communities, we're losing the incentive that we might have to welcome new contributors to our tax base. I'm more than willing to listen to all of the presentations that people want to make, but I don't think it has to go on for a long time. And I would urge the board not to let that happen. And that's enough for now.
Okay. Randy?
I've been thinking about this since we started talking about this, and I got, last night after the meeting, I sat down and just started rolling through my mind in that night. I kept thinking this, the board has a number of things to think about. One is that if the board does nothing, literally sets on their hands and does nothing, the state will then step in and do whatever they want to do, and we lose complete and absolute control of everything in that too. So to me, that's not an option for us. So the other option is that we have to either opt in or opt out. I'm a little concerned about opting out, because I think there's other problems we're gonna be faced with in that. So looking at opting in is a major, major step, because it's gonna entail a lot of things that we have to do as a township. Zoning, and where we want them, how many we're gonna have in the township, what we're talking about in that. I think that's the direction I think the board needs to look at. Because it's a major step for the township to move in this direction, because there's a lot of things behind the scenes that we have to address in that. Tremendous amount of them, and it's not something that we can do at one setting. I think we have to identify everything that has to be addressed, what's the best for the township and for the residents of the township in that overall. If we do nothing, the state will step in and we lose absolutely all control, everything. We have no say at all.
The other thing, too, is if the state decides to up the time, they're putting things in place right now. They could give us 30 days' notice and say, as of, you know, July 1st, this is what's happening. Whatever we have in place right now stands. We're out of luck if we want to change any of that.
This is true. We don't have any idea where they're gonna go.
Yes.
I'm done.
All right, okay. Dave?
First thing is, it's my understanding that with respect to medical marijuana, we didn't do anything, and therefore we've effectively opted out. That stands like it is. The recreation marijuana, we opted out. So we have opted out once we changed. So it's not a matter of the state stepping in and doing something and we're out of luck. We've opted out of both of them. Now, having said that, the residents in this township voted to approve it. So I don't know what our dilemma is. I think our dilemma is to direct the planning commission to start crafting ordinances, because the board gets another look at it anyway, because they have to approve the ordinance. But direct the planning commission to start putting the ordinances together that allow the different phases. And there's many different phases to this whole thing, all the way from growing to the sales and a half a dozen stops in between. But all due respect to the KBIC, it doesn't have anything to do with you. It has to do with the township and what the township wants to do, and this board has got no business looking at what you guys want and crafting something to make your life easier, because we need to craft something to, we need to decide either to opt in or opt out, and if we decide we want to explore it, then we need to direct the planning commission to do what it is that they are there to do. And the board shouldn't worry about it again until they come back with some zoning ordinances, and then we got a chance to study it and look at it and decide which ones we want in and which ones we want out, or if we want into all of them. But I think we're overthinking it again. I think it's simpler than that. If the people voted in, we're supposed to be sitting here representing the residents of this township. And we don't have any business in my, the way I look at it, to sit here and say, "Yeah, they voted in, but everybody didn't know what they're talking about. We're gonna go ahead and opt out and leave it that way." We don't have that right from my perspective. We're here representing the residents. They've already expressed their desire. We just need to make sure it's done in an orderly fashion, so that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and that starts with the ordinances. And that's the same thing that tape shows. It all starts with the ordinances. And you gotta get them done right, and it's gonna take a while. It's gonna take well into December to get those ordinances done. You've seen the way the planning commission goes after an ordinance, and it's about as meticulous as I've seen everything get done. And when it comes back, it'll be pretty close to right. I think that's our first step. I don't think we need to make a decision whether we're gonna opt in or not right now. We need to take a look at the ordinance and see where they lead us and decide then if we want to move ahead or not.
Yeah, the ordinances are number one that's recommended to, but we still have to figure out how we see this unfolding, because it involves a lot of licensing, and like I said, fire regulations and zoning, and there's rules, and there's, just listening to the tape, and that's probably just the surface of it. So we can't just say, "Okay, planning commission, go ahead, put these all together, and then we'll decide what we want to do." I mean, we still have to figure out how we see this happening with buildings or, you know, the fact that the tribe is here is just a kind of a happenstance. We were gonna have this discussion, they came and made a presentation, that's fine. So we can consider that as part of whatever we want to do. But we're not here to make an adjustment or a decision or finalize something for them, like you said. This isn't about what they're trying to do. They made a proposal, and we can consider that. But we need to figure out how we see this falling into place for our township. We know that the rest of the state, we've already surpassed California and Colorado combined with our rules and regulations of what we're gonna allow. So we've got like seven or eight times the freedom those two entities have. So the state is, has put all these work groups together, and they're listening to everything that's happening, and they're writing stuff in the background to accommodate what, according to the tape especially, is gonna accommodate the cities, more so than the smaller communities, the townships and the villages. So with everything happening around us, how do we fit into that picture?
That's where I'm thinking, that right now we're, my comment that we're overthinking it right now, because we don't know what the state's gonna do, because they don't know what they're gonna do. But we do know one thing for sure. If we're gonna consider opting in, we need ordinances that cover it. And that's where that research and development needs to go on, with the comprehensive report back to the board. And by then, maybe, the state will have it together to the point that they actually have a set of rules that they're gonna use. And I think if I read that right, if they don't do anything by December of this year, then we could actually start licensing our own people. So...
I don't, I don't know.
The, we're just overthinking it. I mean, the, as you go through the planning route, that decides where you're gonna allow different functions of this, and how close to schools you're gonna allow it, and what type of density you're gonna allow. That's all zoning ordinance things. And, no, I don't expect the board to sit here and do nothing while the planning commission works on it, because that's not the way it's ever worked, when the planning commission is doing an ordinance. There's always reports back to the board, and they're always weighing in on where we think it's headed. But I just think we shouldn't waste so much time on this that we're hamstringing ourselves, that we should, we need to move forward, and the first step is to move it to an ordinance development.
Pete?
You mean I'm wasting my time this afternoon?
Pretty much. My opinion, though. I could be wrong.
No. If we opted out, you know, and you have to start doing something about it, opt in, and then you have to have your ordinance and stuff like that in place. It's not gonna be December. It's gonna be before that, because the governor's pushing. You might see it in the next couple of months, I don't know if it's happening. My interest is, I'm coming to the old set that, you know, don't do that. I've seen a lot of the negatives on this thing, and so I try to open my mind up to what's coming and that down the road, and I don't expect everyone to think like I do. But I want to know, like, income. What is it gonna be for the residents of the area if we go along with this? Fees and stuff like that. Police protection, are we gonna have to add more police protection for it? I don't know. Colorado, they got a bag stuffer, they shove bag stuffers in their grocery bags here, you know, in their supermarkets, that do's and don'ts, you know, do we want to go something like that? You know, there's so many things you want to do. I worry about our kids, is it gonna affect our kids? They say you want to smoke, and, yeah, in John's face, nobody likes to be smoking. I think that's gonna be harmful. But it's not only smoking. It's candy, you know, bars, stuff like that. And medical marijuana, I love to see it, because it does, there's a benefit for the oils and stuff like that, that helps people with different diseases and, you know, problems. So, yeah, I struggle with it. You know, I don't want to do anything that's gonna hurt our kids. I looked at the college out there, and I looked at the high school, and are we gonna hamper them by okaying this and having it more accessible? What the hell, everyone else is gonna have it. Marquette's gonna have it, you know darn well they're gonna do it, and other things around us. But what benefit is it gonna give to the township? That's what I'd like to know before. And, you know, in your packet there, you had this recreation questions and answers. You can opt out, opt in. You know, if you opt in, you want to get out, it sounds easy, it's coming back in again. So I mean, we have to make the right decision the first time, and live with our decisions.
Am I correct that we've already opted out of both of them?
I thought it was just the one. Somebody got to remind me. Go ahead, Randy. You had your hand up.
You actually have two separate positions. Number one is for years, you remember, you had a moratorium in place. That moratorium basically said there would be nothing other than caregiver-to-patient relationships in the township. No commercial activity, no sales, no growing, other than that relationship. That's the first side of it. And that's what the KBIC is asking for, a change in that posture for medical marijuana use. Okay? What you're dealing with also now is the recreational marijuana use. And yes, you have opted out of that totally at this point, pending action by the state to establish the rules. My understanding of the discussion today was, from a community standpoint, what is it that you, as the governing body, the seven-member elected governing body, see as the best benefit for the majority or all of the residents of this township? Granted, the vote on the recreational marijuana did carry, but you have fully, 38% of your voters did not address that question. So what does that mean? Doesn't mean they're for it, doesn't mean they're against it. You don't have any impact from 38% of your voters. One-third, more than a third of the voters did not address that question.
That voted.
That voted. Correct.
They just left it blank.
Yep, didn't address it. So from that standpoint, I don't think you have a clear mandate, one way or the other. You got more than a third of your residents didn't give you the information. Now, it can be argued that they're in favor, it can be argued that they're opposed. You don't know. So...
Well, and having the two different issues complicates it, too, because the medical side of it's already, it's been in place 11 years.
So the KBIC is asking you to amend your position on medical marijuana to allow for the sales at their facility.
Dave?
I don't, I don't believe we can opt into the point that we're gonna accommodate KBIC with the medical. That takes a zoning ordinance change, and that's only addressing the retail sales portion of it. I can't believe that we would actually move ahead with something like that without looking at the whole, everything that's out there.
That's why we're doing this.
The 38%, I would say 38% of people didn't address it. I said it was 38% of the people out there that just don't care one way or the other. You can't assume that they don't want it, you can't assume that they do want it. They didn't address it because they don't care. And if they do care, then shame on them, they should have addressed it.
Right.
We decide on people who vote. Everything that we do in this township is, do they want this, do they want that? And that's how we make our decisions.
It has to be based on the people that stepped up to the polls and indicated their preference. And if we're not gonna do that, then we're, I don't know where we're getting our information from, because we're making decisions in a dark room.
Right. And if you're gonna go forward and opt in on the recreational marijuana, then medical marijuana doesn't matter?
Well, in order to, in order to sell...
But I mean, from a political standpoint, you're either, you'll be supporting marijuana in the township.
If you're going, you have to have a medical marijuana license to be able to sell recreational marijuana. They're only limiting, they're only doing a few. And whether that changes at some point, I don't know. But for right now, if they have the license, they can sell recreational later.
Can I interject? That'll be a separate license that'll have to be applied for, but those that do have medical dispensaries in place go to the top of the list, and those that are in rural areas also go to the top of the list. So there are two different issues. But I mean, what we're here today discussing is the sale, growing, cultivation, transporting. Use is already here. Use is legal throughout the state on private property. So, I mean, if you're worried about kids getting it and this and that, it's the 10 plants that each individual is allowed to grow in their house. It's the two and a half ounces they're allowed to carry on person, and it's 10 ounces that they're allowed to have in possession at home. So it's already here. It's whether you want to sell it, or grow it, or allow it to be grown and sold, is the question. Because use is already established.
John?
There's a lot of things that are gonna take some time. But I'm convinced that the township board can and should make a clear choice whether they want to direct staff and the planning commission to proceed with tentative plans that we can weigh. There's no harm in that. There's no acceptance of that. It's just doing planning, something we can always do a little bit more of. And I think that whatever comes out of this get-together today can end with whether the township board wants to make that step to direct staff and the planning commission, or whoever else they might want, to start making plans that are tentative and can be weighed again at another time.
I agree. Dan, you wanna throw anything in?
I'm just, I'm just looking at the amount of townships in or cities that have opted in, and a lot of it surprised me. I had no idea.
Two hundred.
Yeah, it's, and in the U.P. It's here. I voiced my opinion last time that I'm in favor of this, and I believe if the tribe is willing to come in and we do benefit from it, that's a win-win for the township. I agree that we should do some planning for different ordinances, but if we don't, if we don't allow this to happen in our township, it's gonna happen in the neighboring township, or it already is, and we're gonna lose. We're gonna lose a great majority of profit. We lost the dark stores. This would really help our tax base, and I believe we should move forward with it.
If you look at like the alcohol, you know, a lot of people, you know, don't like that. People drink too much, and I don't try to judge anymore, because I can't drink. I gotta find another doctor says I can, but I mean...
I've been telling you, just ignore your doctors if you feel bad.
Well, I looked at that, too, you know. We sold in the store, we sold a lot of booze and beer and stuff like that, and sometimes you trip your head, you know, but they're all right. Same thing with us. We have to decide if it's good for our community. If that's something you want to do, that's it. What they say they're gonna do, that's above and beyond anything else. Our decision is, is it gonna be good for us? And what do we have to do to take the steps to make sure you're in line if you decide you're, you know, we're gonna go through with it? The planning commission, they have to come up with some laws and higher ordinances and stuff like that. And the only danger prolong, we can't drag our feet, we drag our feet on too many things, you know, put it off and put it off, and we'll talk about it. So I think we have to make a decision, get the planning commission to take a look at it. Do we want it? Do we want it? I'd like to know, effective license, what do we get from the fees and stuff like that? Do you think we're gonna have to add, and anyone who's gonna do it, are we thinking of adding on more police protection, stuff like that? What we're gonna have income, look at checks and balance, you know, P and L, what we got coming in, we're gonna pay out. Looking at that for residents. Because the resident say, what is it gonna do for us? You know, and that's what we have to be able to answer.
Randy, do you want to add anything else?
That's a decision for the seven of you to make, behalf of the community.
Yeah, and we don't, in the work session, we don't make motions or anything, just so everybody knows. We'll bring this forward to another meeting, but we needed to have this discussion. It's the only way we can have a discussion as a group. Randy, go ahead.
I think, I'm following up on Dave, and I think Dave probably did it better than I did, but as far as I'm concerned, is as we move forward, and which we're gonna have to, that's my personal feeling in that. And whether we assign the planning commission, or staff, or the combination of whatever it is, to move forward on that, to come up with some type of document so that we can put it out to the community itself, and that not for any one entity or anything else, it's for total. And whatever amounts to our future needs for the township, how it's gonna benefit the township and the residents of. I don't look at it as a revenue, I'm looking at what benefit for the township. If we get revenue, fine, and fine. But I want to protect the township as much as possible in that overall, and that go that way. And I think some of the things that brought up on security, police, and other areas, as to where they can be located, where they can't be located, density and everything else has to be addressed by whatever group in the township that we direct to start developing it at that point in time. And I would suggest, as we move forward with this, that whatever group is involved with this, that they give us a kind of a synopsis as they move forward as to where they're at. Because we have seven people here, and we all have our different ideas, and we may come up with something that is not thought of at the time. We read a lot. We read a lot, hopefully we all read a lot. We get a lot, a lot of data, and that, we're supposed to be. And maybe just give us another input to, to that group within the township that's working on it, and go forward in that. That's my feeling. I don't think we have a choice right now. I think we need to move forward on it, and at what level, the board's gonna have to make that decision.
Dan?
I'd like to hear what Richard DeRosa and KBIC people have to...
Yeah, I was gonna give everybody a chance. See when we, if we're good. Are we good? Dave?
I think with respect to the licensing fees and actually making money on those you can, the licensing fees is based on your cost to administer the program. So, I mean, you need to start documenting the time you spend on it, because that, the time in development can also be factored into the cost of, of the fee. But you're not gonna make money on the fees, you're just gonna cover your costs. The only money that the township can hope to make is the businesses that come into the township, and, and the taxes they pay. So I don't think there's a lot of money to be made there. I mean, KBIC suggested the means that might present us with some money, but you can't count on all that. You could count on the, on the improvements to the township and what that does to the tax base, the administration of it, it's, the licensing fee is just gonna, it's gonna be write-off, because that should be, should cover itself, and that's it.
Well, because they've said repeatedly, you can charge up to five thousand dollars, and the questions come up as to whether you can change that next year, increase the fees or whatever. But you do have to justify, and you can't be changing things back and forth. If your costs go up, yeah...
Well, and you can't even charge up to five thousand dollars, you have to justify why you charge five thousand dollars.
But I think that's what people see, oh, we can get five grand off of this every year, but it doesn't work that way.
No, and the state's gonna make a charge of money.
Exactly.
Not being too cynical about it, but demonstration after demonstration of it, there's money to be made, the state will take it, whether it's property tax, whether it's personal property tax, whether it's tax exemptions, you know, whatever, if there's money to be made, it will not state with the township.
No, they let you to five thousand while they charge sixty thousand for a license and six thousand for a non-refundable application fee.
We've just seen one thing after another that has been taken, you know. Still provide the service, but the revenue goes to the state, one after another.
But there's several counties and cities that have done this already, and you know, they have ordinances, and five hundred feet from a school, and, you know. But we can't, we have to be precise on what we want, and for the planning commission, so they can come up with some good ordinances.
Jason, I was gonna, excuse me one second, I was gonna have you comment if you have to go, or, because you're on the clock. Or if you want to listen to what they're gonna say first, I'd just like to have you comment at some point. I just want to keep you, because I know you got, you know, meetings and other stuff you do all day long.
Well, Jason's...
This one's pretty important, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
These are the planning and doing things here, so basically you're gonna want to be dealing with, with most of the paperwork and most of the coordination of these activities from a staff standpoint, so that's why I haven't seen that.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I'm just here for fact-finding and to listen to the consensus. And even though it's a work session, I believe that a consensus is enough to get staff going on research and development.
Well, let's start, go ahead if you want. Yeah, just come up to the... Tell us where you are, your address, we have it on file, on the record.
Joe DeRosa, seventeen forty-six Fish Lake Road, Champion Township. Well, I'd like to thank you for having this work group and hearing everyone out today and their thoughts and their ideas, and taking the liberty to putting together some work group information that you have in front of you. And I believe, Jason, there's a packet for you as well. And I'll be brief, we'll just skim over some of this. In the number one, the Michigan cities that have opted in, as you've alluded to, there's, there's a substantial amount, and there's a substantial amount that haven't. There's some good reading information from Clinton Township as to concerns that this board has indicated with school districts and school zones, and those are all items that your planning commission, with Jason's efforts, will protect the citizens in your community as well, that, that need to always be vetted out and fleshed to make sure you get, not only utilizing the tools in your toolbag for the zoning and hours of operation, locations, as to where any potential development may or may not take place in your township. Because, you know, I, I, I fully know that you will do the right thing and take care of your community first, before revenue. And of course, the other side to that coin is, revenue provides services, and, you know, there's a balancing act there. And so, I provided copies for Jason as well, just for information purposes, other townships in, in Marquette County that have already approved. So, there's applications that have already been done, and you can use that as a, you know, a footprint to develop your own applications. For Nagani Township, which relatively clean and concise, Humboldt Township was quite extensive, and I was instrumental in working with them and lancing lobbyists along with the legislature during the development of Humboldt. So, they have quite a stringent ordinance. In fact, so stringent, and, and something you may want to consider, which is a little bit difficult to get businesses attracted, their board actually, annual license approval, not an automatic renewal. So, every year, any operator in Humboldt has to come back to the board for board approvals. Now, that could be troubling if you're spending five million dollars in their district and you have to adhere to an annual renewal. That puts full control of the board, by the way, I mean. So, something to consider moving down the road for, whether it's Jason or your board, that's a wonderful tool to have control. Could it be an extension of too much control? That could probably be argued in court as well, but... Those things are things I'd like you to consider as a board moving forward as having controls. Other lower Michigan ordinances as well, and then finally, the last one, in Crockery, which also includes their zoning map in their ordinance as to locations that these could or couldn't be permitted. I think some of the challenges that your board needs to consider, if you are going to move forward, is how you're going to handle something that may already be in your township with, with CBD oils. I watched a commercial the other day with CBD oil-infused ice cream, just came out on the market. Now, the Myers Store, I don't know, I haven't been over there to see if they're handling the product yet, but it's advertised, and you're gonna have Targets, the Walmarts, Starbucks is gonna be next. They're going to be handling these CBD products. And if you don't do some type of regulatory process, you will have, I think, a limited say in how you're going to handle this. So, you know, I, I think the consensus is, doing nothing probably isn't the right thing. And, and again, I applaud your efforts, and in any way we can, I can assist, or, and this isn't just about the tribe, as we know, you certainly can't create one ordinance for one entity. But there's no secret, you're the retail juggernaut of the whole Upper Peninsula. And the adjacent townships around you, as Lynn had indicated, are probably, one, of course is fully on board, and others will be coming, so... And I won't talk about the commitment of what the tribe was going to do, but, you know, I, I heard Randy earlier talk about the will of the state always coming in, and we see that at the county, Steve, so often, that they come in and they take the revenue, and we have to continue to provide services, Randy Gerard is right. There's a way around that. And you can create a licensed connection to receive one percent of the gross revenue from that location, that can be a commitment they can make, I'll, I'll let President Schwartz talk about that. But I did a similar thing in Humboldt years back with Rio Tinto. The state was gonna come in, and they were going to take the majority of the severance tax from the minerals in our community. The state had decided they're state minerals and not the community's minerals. So, the sidebar to that was, we had control of the rail corridor, and Rio Tinto had to pay a demerge to the township so long as they were doing business to haul their product out. And that today has provided direct revenue for the township. And I think maybe you can use some form of something, Jason's a very clever individual, he could probably come up with a mechanism to allow that to happen, so the state doesn't come in and steal whatever revenue from, whether this moves forward or not, so. And again, thank you for your time. I've provided some information, browsed it over, there's, there's some things, both for and against, in some of those articles, so, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? Yeah, we'll just...
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Chris Schwartz, I'm the tribal president for the Kewuna Bay Indian Community. My home address is one five nine six five Mission Road, Baraga, Michigan. I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of the trustees for taking the time today to sit down and discuss this important issue regarding marijuana. We think the Kewuna Bay Indian Community, here's, here's, here's all of your concerns, because we have the same concerns you have. You know, children, other people who are getting access to this, to this medicine, and the effects that they have. And what we found out is that if you regulate these types of activities in your township, we found that the accessibility to children goes down. I mean, those who regulate those types of activities in the township are gonna find out that the addiction rates with children are going to go down. In addition to that, I think you're gonna have less crime in your community. We hear your concerns regarding services, and I think what we had discussed before, there may be an opportunity for us to maybe carve out a percentage of the revenues coming in, and to help offset some of the services, such as fire, police, ambulance services, and other things like that. I mean, I think there's enough money in this business for everybody to get a little piece of it. And, you know, we just want to be part of the solution here, all over America, and all over in the state of Michigan, even in Marquette. I mean, and that means regulating these types of activities in it, and I think you've, you've all hit the nail on the head, it's coming, and, and it's an opportunity to regulate these types of activities. So I think, okay, Garrett, if you have anything else you wanted to say?
I think everything's been covered today.
Yeah, I mean, from the Kewuna Bay Indian Community's perspective, we want to come in, and we want to do this in the right way. We want to ask you guys the right way to do this. We've got a gas station here in your neck of the woods, we came to you and asked you to do that. We've, we've done everything you've asked us to do, I mean, we jumped through the, you know, the, the regulatory stuff, the, the, the planning and the traffic studies, and the whole nine yards getting in, you know. We've even provided a letter of support for, I think there's a tunnel that goes underneath there, under US forty-one, to help support the Marquette Township and the services that are coming in here. Tourism is certainly important to Marquette Township as it is, as it is to the Kewuna Bay Indian Community. I mean, we're in this together. I mean, we're not going anywhere. The Kewuna Bay Indian Community is gonna be here for the time immemorial. We're gonna be here forever, and we just want to be good citizens, we want to be able to work with our neighbors in, in a way that is a win-win situation for everybody. And I think there's an opportunity here in Marquette County that we can take advantage of, or Marquette Township that we can take advantage of. And if it's done in a right way, I think it's going to be a, a service to the community that they're going to, that they're going to wait. What we've seen is that marijuana, it, it's been given a bad name, so to speak, you know, and if you, if it's regulated in a manner, medically regulated in a manner, it can be advantageous to those people who need it. And that's what we're all about, is providing medicine and an opportunity for people to live their lives the way they want to. And sometimes, medical marijuana is, is, is that, is that medicine that they're looking for. Trustee Eversin had noted the last time that some of his people are using it also, so... I mean, I've got people who are using it, I think if we all looked around, we could see people who are taking advantage of it and medically benefiting from this product, so... Again, I just wanted to thank you guys for sitting down and listening to us, and, and moving forward, and, and making this, and working together on this work group. If there's anything we can do, I mean, we want to, and I understand that you can't make a carve-out for us, but I mean, we just wanted to ask you, and all you could say is no, I mean, it's like, we're hoping for a yes, though, you know, so, we're here to ask, and, and so...
Chris, I've got a question for either of you. I don't know what the numbers were exactly, but when your group voted on whether or not this was gonna go forward, it was pretty close.
It was pretty close.
It was like one sixty to one forty-eight?
Two seventeen to one fifty-five.
Okay, okay, maybe that's not the number.
That was our...
No, that was, she's talking about the previous one that was done four years ago, the referendum.
One eighty-four to one forty-nine, I believe. It was, it wasn't a, we had a bigger turnout for our last election than we did this one.
We just had a referendum over the weekend, the past weekend. And what we asked people in the community if they would be interested in invest, in an investment of about four million dollars.
That was the question.
And that's the one, maybe the one you were referring to. And, and the community passed it, maybe two...
Two seventeen to one fifty-five.
Two seventeen to one fifty-five, so we have, that's unofficial, the community hasn't ratified those election results yet, but the, the numbers are rad on, so... The people of my community are, are willing to make an investment.
So, it's the money part of it, okay.
Yes, yes.
And did, do you know why those who voted no? Do you have any insight as to why, they just didn't feel like they should spend the money, or?
Well, I told, well, I told them if they felt uncomfortable to vote no, is what I told them, because when I, I went to the senior citizens, he went to Marquette, and I came, I went to Baraga, and, and I addressed about sixty people. We went to our senior citizens program, and, and we did a presentation with them, did them all of the pros and cons with them, and there was a lot of questions with their seniors. There was a lot of good feedback, and there was a couple of people who really wanted to nail down the details on, you know, what is and what isn't going to happen with this operation. After I left the meeting, I felt good. In fact, I had a couple, I had a couple of seniors called me up and said that they were looking forward to the vote. In fact, they were looking forward to the presentation, we had a presentation, Joe was there at the presentation, we had a presentation with the whole community, an opportunity for Q and A. And after that, the vote went through, you know, so... Why they voted no, I, I can't say why, other than maybe I could say they listened to me, because they, and I told them, they don't understand it to vote no, that's what I tell them.
It was more of a risk on the investment, is what their concern was.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, what the question was, compared to vote numbers.
It was more along the lines of, you know, they wanted more of a guarantee that they were gonna get their money back, plus some, and it's like, this is a business venture, and any business venture, whether you're a small vendor at an event, or you're Walmart, is a risk, no matter what. And it's hard to relay that message sometimes, that hey, this is a business venture, there are gonna be risks to it, so, that's, that's what their concerns were.
Well, the major concern is, it, it's an elders' trust fund, is what it is. And, and a lot of the elders were concerned that they, they wouldn't be able to take advantage of it when they got there. So we took a look at the facts and the figures of it, and we said, the return on investment on the, on the elders' trust fund has only been four percent over the past years. And, and in order for it to make it solvent, we said we need to make that elders' trust fund look like twenty-five million dollars, so we could meet the annual payouts of a million dollars. So we are currently about fourteen million dollars from that goal.
Yep.
Yeah, to make that fund solvent. So that was one of our selling points to the, to them, is that if this moves forward, there's an opportunity to maybe double your return on your investment, if not quadruple or a hundred times it. So they took a look at it, and I told them if we could manage it in a proper way and manage the risk, that there's an opportunity here that I don't think we will ever have an opportunity again. I mean, these types of businesses don't come around very often, you know what I mean? So, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, no, it's fine, thanks. Any other questions for Chris? Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Does anybody else want to ask a question or give a comment, or just kind of a little more relaxed today?
It's been taking us about 70 years to get here. Was it the 50s when they first started all the evil weed movies?
Reefer Madness?
Reefer Madness.
You know, I don't know if anybody who's died from reefer last year, but I know from cigarettes, there's at least 420,000 people who died from cigarettes.
420,000, yeah.
I know Budweiser and Coca-Cola have both taken patents out in Canada for CBD or otherwise infused beverages.
So they still have several other opioid manufacturers.
In fact, I stopped at the pet store yesterday in Watts, and I asked them if they had any pot for dogs. And they said, yes, we do, Chris. And they brought me back and they had these little CBD drops that relieves tension and stress for your dogs. I said, my dog is always scratching, you know, and he's got these little red hot spots on his back. And I had asked my cousin, I said, have you heard about that pot for dogs? She says, yeah, and she says, I use it. And those red spots and them hot spots are all gone now, she said, so it really works for the dogs even. So I bought some of this CBD oil from the pet store downtown Watts yesterday, and I haven't had an opportunity to check it, so. I was hoping to get home early tonight, see if the dog, I was going to give him a little bit of pot.
Have you helped any red spots?
No.
I wanted to help my wife's rash.
Yeah, it's kind of funny, because when I was on the pain medication, what it was costing for my medication compared to what it cost for the same thing for the dog was ridiculously different. And it's like you said, we've got the same thing for opioids for pets, that a fraction of the cost of moods.
We could start a whole industry.
Teaching the dogs to inhale.
But there is a lot of medical, people do come up and they see it, they think it's for different reasons and it does help, so whatever's in there, I don't know.
Blacoma is one of the original issues.
And seizures.
They're the Alzheimer's and all the other things that help them too.
So this is the way I see it happening, we have a meeting on June 18th, our next board meeting, so I assume we could add this to the agenda. And then probably move forward in directing the planning commission and staff to move forward, because I think we have a consensus that we're not against it, I guess, or, you know, moving forward in the planning stage.
Right, the actual process would be for the board to take a supportive motion in the hand of the planning commissioner.
Yes, and we can do that at our next board meeting on the 18th, so I see that where we go with this from here, so.
And some samples?
Dave, did you ever have?
My comments, I hope what they're at the next agenda is.
Well, me and the supervisor do the agenda, so we'll make sure it's there.
One of us will remember. And if there's more information you need, I would like you to listen to that tape, though.
I didn't have enough time.
Yeah, no, we just, I...
It's an hour and a half.
Sent Isaac the message last night.
And it's difficult, you have to turn the volume way up to really hear it.
There's papers and stuff, but you can, I got lots.
Is that the Michigan Township Association? Do you have a special pastors meeting?
Yeah, you do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Thank you for the listeners.
Oh, would you please? Thank you.
It's a really, it's actually, it's actually a recording of a presentation that's one of our, which we have the other day on this call, so it's not great when you can hear it.
You know, if the township is worried about banking issues, I know there's a symposium going on at June 11th downstate. I know there's about 400 banks that do banks, business with marijuana.
600.
600 banks that do business with marijuana in the United States, and about 140 friggin' federal credit unions that do it also. I don't think there are any in Michigan right now, but there's a symposium that's going on in lower Michigan as of June 11th, I think. And then that same bankers group is meeting here in Marquette the end of the month, so if somebody brings it up and wants to talk, I don't know if you guys are bankers or not, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
That would definitely, what's going through right now is the same banking act is in front of Congress. And that's being pushed by law enforcement, because Dave's concerns are true. These dispensaries and grows are considered soft targets, because they deal in nothing but cash. And, you know, it's surprising to, we were on, I was on the hill when they were arguing the points, and it was law enforcement that was pushing for it, you know, and they were saying, you know, we're trying to eliminate these soft targets, because if you go to these places, there's vaults, heavy safes, and no, and there's an ATM, but they won't take credit cards. And I mean, if you want to free up these transactions and have less cash on hand, you want to be able to do some banking. And that's being pushed right now, so hopefully, by the time we're all ready to move and actually build and go forward, that this act will be in place, but it's not right now, but there are, I meant 600 altogether, there's 388 banks that are currently doing business with the cannabis industry, and 134 credit units that are choosing to do so. They're all started on the West Coast and they've seen it and they've all started opting in, you know, it's, basically right now, it's less than $10 a day you can deposit and certain things that, you know, won't trigger red flags or doesn't violate the, some of the acts that are for money laundering and that kind of thing, and, you know, even though it's still illegal, it's still, you're still going to pay taxes on it, and, you know, if you talk to Mr. Parker, he goes to the electric company and it's $12,000 to $15,000 a month that he's paying in cash. And it's crazy, it's, you know, we have to get with the times and the banking industry definitely has to catch up to that, so.
FDIC.
Yeah, NCUA as well.
Yeah, FDIC right now is still federal legend, right?
Jason.
Banks can't touch it, but FDIC insurance.
Go ahead, Jason.
I'm just curious if the tribe and/or from a leadership role, the county's perspective has looked at the textile or agricultural benefits as well as the medical and...
Yeah, we have, you're talking about the 2018 farm bill and the hemp bill. We've actually taken a look at it, and there's an opportunity under the farm bill too, and actually, our Ojibwa Community College is going to take research in there, because there's a research portion inside of that farm bill, that they're going to take a look at it and see if they can't take advantage of the farm bill. So there is some opportunities in the farm bill. Joe, you're itching to say something.
Yeah, there's also, glad you brought that up, there's also a pilot program that's being done in the state right now. And interesting enough, Mercedes and BMW are moving exponentially forward in the hemp. Recycled bumpers, dash, door components, all of the car components are going to be pressed and, you know, similar, years ago, it was, they've been made out of oil and plastic and they're pressed in a composite mold. Now they're going to be moving into using reusable hemp to be reshredded later on and put back into a mold. So they're really moving to a natural product to be into these cars, and it may affect, you know, oil production down the road, which is a good thing, it's turning green, so. So there is a big, a big...
Yeah, there's lots of dormant farm property around the area.
Big move.
Trust me, we're looking at, because the United States government wanted to make us farmers.
Well, in effect, that's what we'll be doing. And today, it's still farming.
Turn around is fair play, huh?
So we're taking a look at it, Jason.
Oh, I'm glad to hear, I just think from a renewable standpoint, and reutilizing properties that are performing less than desirable from a tax perspective, those are, that's a viable option.
And not just that, but, you know, we've got the Warden Power Plant in Watts that's burning railroad ties right now, and BHK child development is a downwind from about half a block. And if they could be burning hemp instead of railroad ties, that's no crease in the air. I mean, the pollution is down and it's an energy source as well, so I mean, that's, we're looking at it from all different angles.
Let the neighbors be smiling all day long.
Well, to qualify as hemp, it has to be less than .03% THC, so. When we talk about CBDs, that's a non-psychoactive component to marijuana, but it's all the same thing.
A couple of tribes have approached me in that perspective also, a tribe in the eastern end and a tribe in the western end, in regards to hemp. But we haven't had a discussion yet.
It's like 100 times stronger than cotton.
And I know some tribes in Wisconsin had tried it last year, but they, when, maybe it was a few years ago. It was last year, yeah, Benominy Tribe, the Benominy Tribal Nation had tried it through their college, and they had this great big hemp field that was going on. And in this one hot day, the federal government came in and they tested their marijuana, and it happened to be .04%, which was above the .03% threshold, so they wiped the whole field up. They were mad. You know, and you can't control that, the percentage of THC in it, because on a hot day, it's going to go up. And if it cold cools down, it goes down, so it fluctuates up and down, so, I mean, you can make all attempts you want to try to control the threshold of .03%, but I mean, Mother Nature is going to do that for you, you know, just...
And I'd just like to say one more thing, you know, when we talk about our distribution centers and our grows, we're talking about a state regulated facility, that's state tested, you know, everything is going to be up to par. What's currently in place right now, like I said, with the use in place, is you don't know what each individual person is doing or what they're putting in it, because there was just a recent case of fentanyl found in marijuana, which is crazy when you think about it. But if it's coming from our facility or a state licensed facility, it is going to be tested and you're going to know exactly what you get. I've visited, visited every, well, not every, but a couple dispensaries in Vegas and Nevada lately. And when you buy something, a product from them, you get a information label, just like you do when you go to the grocery store on what's in it, what percentage, everything is right on there listed. And if you're getting it from private, because let's not kid ourselves, there is a black market, and it's huge. They put in whatever they want and you don't know what you're getting, what percentage, nothing. This is basically going to kill the black market, and it has, all around the country. Anyway, why would you go to a dealer where you don't know what you're getting, when you can walk into a store and say, hey, this is what I need, this is what I want? So I'm just pointing out that, you know, it's, it basically eliminates that portion of it, and that brings down crime.
Canada did the same thing with theirs, all packaged through the government.
Canada's certainly maximizing their investment.
Yeah.
Because the country, or the government grabbed control of that situation and created the highest and best use for itself. And it's also a responsible thing to do from a leadership standpoint.
Let me break down to the packaging. I mean, that's, you know, you got, everything's, if there's more than one dose in something, it has to be childproof. And I mean, that's just the bags that you've got to twist open, the caps, everything is childproof, so.
I mean, there's an opportunity to control and regulate it in a township. What I see happening, and even in my neck of the woods down there in Barriga Township, and I looked, I don't know if they opted in or how, but what I see is the local pharmacy handing out these little CBD gummies. And I'm thinking, what if the kids get a hold of that? You know, there's no regulations in place, there's nothing, so I think if we want to do the responsible thing and put some regulations in place and some ordinances in place, and, you know, so we know what the ground rules are, so everybody knows what the ground rules are, because back home where we're at now, I mean, I don't know what the rules are, so. And they're just handing them out, you go to the pharmacy, you get your prescriptions and you look in the bag, you expect to get your pills and stuff, at the bottom of the bag is this little gummy bag, and it's free from the pharmacy. I said, I don't know if they're handing them out down this neck of the woods.
I think they're getting sold. CBD oils are all over.
Yeah, sold.
Yeah, so I mean, we, I just want to thank the board for carrying us out. And moving forward, I think it's an opportunity to regulate, regulate.
Yeah, we appreciate y'all coming and giving us your information. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for having us, guys.
2:05.